I follow the order, the May 5th, San Diego, Iowa. Five city council meeting in the Harbach Center. Would the clerk please call?
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members Klein?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
McAlany?
Here.
Very good. Here to plead pride and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know of no additions or changes to the agenda to approval. Second motion and second to approve the agenda for the discussion. If not, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, nay. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda we have is a proclamation for National Public Works. May 15 to 21, 2020. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high-quality life, well-being of people of color. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in public interest of the citizens, civic leaders and children of five to gain knowledge of and maintain progressive interests and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their community. And whereas this year marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Being now therefore declared that the week of May 15 to 21 is National Public Works Week in the city of Harbach. I urge all citizens to join with the American Public Works Association, pay tribute to our public works professionals for maintaining our national health, safety and quality of life. And just to add to that, I should be fitting just to mention that our public works director Jeff May is going to be recognized as one of the 10 best in the city. Can I ask you what I'm saying about that?
Oh yeah, we're very appreciative of that recognition for one of our department heads. And Jeff has given a lot of his time to that association, APWA, to do this recognition. We'll have a reception event for him next month where a number of folks from APWA will be coming here to present that award to him. And we'll have that over at the Special Events Building on May 16th to 19th, May 19th, from four to five, and happen events just for that purpose next two weeks from now. So looking forward to having Jeff get that recognition, well deserved, over our long career of public works and work at APWA.
Thank you, Matt. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item we have is our citizen presentation. It's the opportunity for our citizens to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete is checking online, let me just remind everyone of the pillars that we follow here in Harbach. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring in all times for remote and model principles of trust, where respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. Executing our work, we expect that all citizens will act in respectful manner, consistent with the principle. So do we have anyone here in the chamber tonight to address the council on that or not on the agenda? Seeing no one to report, please, do we have anyone online?
No, your honor.
Very good. We'll move to the consent item. To approve.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the consent item. And clerk please call. Klein?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Judkins?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McAlany?
Yes.
Consent items passed. Now we'll move on to our action items. First one is railroad crossing.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items to your consideration tonight related to upcoming work at the Northwest City 6th Railroad Crossing. First is resolution approving the agreement between Iowa DOT, Iowa Interstate Railroad and the city on a cost sharing agreement. Under the conditions of that agreement, the service repair fund, state service repair fund would pick up 60% of the cost. That would leave 20% remaining for the railroad and the city respectively. Second item is approving competitive quotes for the city work, the approach work, millings, removals, sidewalk, medians and asphalt work. Received three quotes middle of last month, Duane Asphalt and Paving, who we've worked with on the past on several projects, was the low quote. And we would recommend approving of that tonight. Final item, third item is relates to traffic control project. Per the agreement, traffic control on the project is solely the responsibility of the city. So that's handled separately. So we got separate quotes on that. Received two quotes. Bonnie's barricades was low, so we would recommend approving that quote as well tonight. Few items related to construction and schedule. Again, so we're all on the same page. This is a full closure of 86th Street northbound and southbound lanes, including the northbound right turn lane on University Boulevard. So the railroad work will include panels and new rails all the way through that intersection. So it's all continuous there. Once the agreement is executed by all parties, we're proposing have a pre-con with everyone into next week. Few more parties involved than usual, working in conjunction with the railroads. We want to go through and make sure who can do what, when, and who can work together at the same time. So a lot to go through there. As indicated in my memo, initial indications are still that the railroad is proposing a start date of the Tuesday after Memorial Day. That would be May 31st. Once we verify that, we will have message boards up at five key locations. I started the traffic control quote. One week in advance. Again, if those dates hold, that would be Monday, May 16th. And then around that same timeframe, obviously doing a lot of other notifications, a letter to affected properties in the area. Plus work with Pete on other platforms that we have, press releases, et cetera. There will also be some face-to-face communications with the folks. There still will be access from University Avenue to head up northbound for the businesses on that side there. So we'll get that information out and contact those businesses to the south of the closure. And then also touch base with the folks in the depot in the southwest corner of the intersection. We have good contacts from some patching, the patching work we did in front of Marzetti's last year. So we reached out to them as well. We've already made contact with the field depot there. They, their access, they have access from both directions, but just kind of coordinating how they do that. The information right now, again, depending on what we talk about in more detail at that pre-con meeting next week is we're expected to indicate that the closure will, the required closure will be two weeks. So that would be starting on that Tuesday, the 31st, and then going to the next Friday, June 10th. Again, certainly working to condense that if at all possible. But want to be realistic as well. I mean, I think this is a situation where we want to, you know, work with all parties involved, but under promise to hopefully over deliver when it comes to closure duration on that. With that, if you have to answer any questions?
Any questions?
Can you walk us through your thoughts on rerouting traffic? That's pretty curious.
Sure. It'd be nice to have a dot cam tonight. We got the, got some closures set up. So we will be routing folks. There'll be some detour signage out for northbound traffic at University Avenue, taking them around to 100th and then altering to Hickman. Again, depending on where folks are going, you can use Swanson to get, you know, to where you're going, but that's routing them around that full mile there. And also on southbound, when you're heading southbound, you can get to the bottom of the intersection and then make a decision whether you're going left or right. So at that point, there will be outbound signage if you're headed to Windsor Heights to get you around via Buffalo Road. Or again, on Swanson back around to University Avenue. The message boards will be up a week in advance. They'll be up during as well.
So does it extend all the way to like Cool Basil? Will you be able to hit Cool Basil from 86th Street? Or you have to?
Yeah. So at that University Avenue intersection, we're closing, it's a little bit of a different intersection. As you, as you approach it, you're basically in a dual left turn lane. We're going to close that inside left turn lane to try to get the message across that the message board you've been reading for a week is really telling you the information you need. So there'll be one left turn lane though, because we need to keep that open for, we can't do a hard closure there because of the businesses. Jimmy John's, Bike Science, some of those other folks up further north. But yes, you'd be able to turn there and then get into Cool Basil. There'd be, you know, some additional signage there, you know, local traffic only after that median and had access to that.
Over 24 hours off?
Yeah, the closure will be up until we're done.
Will they be working 24 hours?
The?
The crews?
Uh, no. I mean, I'm not sure. We'll go through some of those specific details. I would anticipate more than a normal workday to try to keep things moving along. But again, we're kind of dependent on the railroad starting out on that. They have indicated they will work on Saturday. And we'll talk with Duane Asphalt on their schedule as well again to try to minimize that closure.
What are we getting to the 10,000 for the traffic?
So that's, that's 100 days of message boards. So three weeks, five locations. And then that's all the hard closures as well and the detour, outlining detour signage.
So it's basically just signage?
Correct.
Other questions?
Michael? So I didn't like what you did or they did to check that process out. Maybe more of like businesses are open stuff. For those, someone you mentioned down there, once you pass Cool Basil, there's still ours and businesses.
We're working through what the message will say. I think once we do the closure, I think it'll say that same time period will be there, but it said it'll be like no through traffic or local access only. So we have a little flexibility with what that message says once the closure is in place.
Just so they know that the businesses are open.
Right.
Local traffic. You go back there. Ton or eight?
Other, other questions? What we're looking for initially is the resolution.
Who's the resolution?
Second. Motion and second for the resolution, further discussion. Sina, would the clerk please call it through? Klein?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Judkins?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McAlany? Yes.
Because that passes five to zero. Next is the resolution of word contract.
Resolution approve the contracts for Duane Asphalt and Paving for $98,198.75.
Second. Motion and second. Further discussion. Sina, would the clerk please? Klein?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Judkins?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McAlany?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Now, yes, the motion.
Move the motion to approve the traffic control quote, Bonnie's barricades for $9,137.30.
Motion second, further discussion. Sina, would the clerk please?
Who?
Klein?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Judkins?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McAlany?
Yes.
And passes by vote of five to zero. Now we'll move into our discussion items.
Thank you, your honor. Just to bring it tonight, that's what we're talking about. Quite a few of the items on planning list with Doug's comments with the 86th Street neighborhood plan. Just a few items that I wanted to highlight, the CD and the county council questions is some of your top priority items. Rebell Landing continues to move forward with the site planning process. We'll plan to get that in front of planning and zoning here next month or so. And that will come before you and I on action. You also saw a couple items on the consent agenda related to both a grant agreement for 500,000 and another grant application for a million dollars to the Destination Iowa Fund or Program for Rebell Landing. What we're finding with that particular project is that the grant opportunities are a little bit more numerous than the philanthropic ones. So Richard and his team are doing a great job of identifying those and getting those grant applications in. The Economic Vitality Committee, we continue to take applications for that. And this is also a reminder for council, for invitations to anybody. We're getting a number of folks in, council member Judkins has identified a number of folks that submitted applications and the mayor and myself. And so we're hoping kind of through next week to receive those applications. And then after the DC trip, the mayor and councilor Judkins and I getting together to start going through those applicants to present that to you for the committee nominations, excuse me, committee appointments. And then the Hickman Interchange is another item that staff has been working on with the corridor, planning efforts with DOT and the city of Urbendale. We'll also be talking about that with our federal delegation next week in terms of asks related to bike pedestrian elements of that interchange that we're working on in city of Urbendale for both east-west and north-south access. And then landscaping aesthetic opportunities around the interchange, stormwater management, some key items. Urbendale's actually putting together, I saw a one-page flyer for us to take with us to DC on that and talk to our delegations about. And so that, I also anticipate probably at the first June meeting to provide an update to you all of where we're at with a lot of details and discussions to this point on that one. The Waki Sewer Project, a little along, a little on the creek that needs to happen before we can go in and do the restoration. Those project elements continue to move forward. Still hoping for a fall bidding for Waki to put the sewer through that area and for us to be able to start restoration in 2023. Those are going to be some regular meetings between Klein, Waki and the consultant group coming up here on a monthly basis on that project to keep it moving forward. Also want to mention the recruitment retention project. We're really kicking that off this week, as I mentioned, with the staff, the employee appreciation breakfast. There's a number of activity, activities that are happening related to job description reviews, making sure that we're comparing jobs appropriately in the market. And then some more efforts will happen throughout the summer on that with focus groups and surveys with the staff. Also want to mention that animal control element. I know we approved the Pope County, the new agreement with Pope County Sheriff's Office. There will be another piece to that coming forward to you likely starting your next meeting. And this is the renewal of the agreement with furry friends for the animal sheltering element of that. So that was West Pet as a group contracted with furry friends. And so we need to kind of break that apart. Urbendale's already executed in 2028 earlier this week actually for that. And also one element of that that we're going to talk about is some adjustments to how we handle feral cats or community cats in terms of managing that population. There is a proposal that will be included in that 2028 agreement. And then eventually we'll require an ordinance change to allow for trap neutering release programs that are pretty popular across the country to manage these populations. And we definitely have some, some issues with that implied. And so that will be a little bit of a change that we'll talk about at the next, we'll start at the next meeting. That will require an ordinance change and something that furry friends is a very, very big advocate of making this change in Urbendale. Make a similar, is making a similar change starting this week. Last thing I wanted to mention too is on the fire EMS conversations. Of course, the council is aware that at this point Windsor Heights has decided to not progress any further with any kind of collaboration conversations at this moment. But we continue to work with the city of Urbendale and what next steps may look like for our continued relationship there on fire EMS. But then that, your honor, unless there's any questions on any of the other items, I know a number of them will be getting covered in Doug's presentation. And also you had on a number of them here recently in the last council meeting was the floodfront property buyout program and one of these.
Any questions for Matt?
Yes. Two quick questions back. When we, what do we plan to do with the Harbach Center evaluation and build the building?
So the building assessment is occurring now. I'm waiting on the draft report. I've got a piece of it. I don't have all of it yet. And then we're also at a staff level, the engineering teams helping out with this. We're doing kind of an infrastructure review of this kind of block, kind of what the condition is of the infrastructure and pipes, streets, easements that may restrict us. You know, depending on what we want to do with Lan and Harbach or even the adjacent parcels. So we're kind of combining that together along with what we're going to learn here with the program that started out this week. Our intent is at a staff level is pull all that together and bring forward to you strategic planning or recommendation on how we may move forward with this facility and appropriate development. We're getting some good information, particularly on the building assessment. Probably not a surprise. It's a pretty rock solid building. And so that was one thing we wanted to make sure we had a good structural evaluation of. And so that could present some, some options and opportunities for us to consider. Again, keeping this building if you're purposing it. Again, we want to review that with you all in detail, but for over the next month or so, we should be getting that information gathered.
So any question, chief, when do we, where are we with the four 10-hour days? Would that change?
We have that negotiated into our next contract. That takes effect with the new contract on July 1st.
Anything else from that? Doug, I think you're up.
This is, this is actually pretty exciting for me, not this discussion that we're going to have, but the fact that this room brings back a lot of memories. This month of May, 26 years ago, was my first city council meeting in this room. So. Things are set up.
More in the same town.
It's set up a little differently, but it certainly brings back quite a bit of memories. So, pretty cool. In any case, for tonight's, again, it is not intended to be a long presentation and discussion. I will save that for the next meeting. So be prepared for that. But what I really want to encourage you to do in this time, and I know that most of you will have a nice block of time as you're traveling west or excuse me, east. So good two-hour plane ride. That'll give you plenty of opportunity to get through this hundred-page doc. Lots of pictures, lots of tables. So it shouldn't be too big a stretch for you.
Some pluses and as needed for mice.
Ones that are staying around the works?
Take it short enough.
So the big thing really for tonight, one is just to, again, encourage you to, to get through the documents and probably more specifically to critically go through that doc. The intent of this thing is to set the stage for a lot of future actions, both in terms of policy, programming, projects. So if we don't get this relatively right, things become more problematic as we move down with those activities. Again, I'm not going to tell you how to read the document, but as you go through it, the big things to keep in mind are, do we have the principles right? The ideas behind how we want to see this part of our community, how these neighborhoods continue to be sustainable and hopefully improve over time. So critically, go through those items and ask yourself those questions. The ideas, the concepts, are they moving us forward in a way that you are comfortable with? And if they're not, again, this is the time to really be talking about those. There are going to be some things in this document that are stretches and are going to feel uncomfortable. And I know I anticipate the community, as we try to do some of these things, are going to have some pushback. And that's okay. We want to anticipate that. We accept that. But what I want to stress to you is, is don't be stuck on failure at this point. Because it's very, very easy to say, no, we haven't done this before, or this is the way we've done it in the past, or this neighborhood has been that way for 50 years. Don't get stuck on that because again, we know that there needs to be some change. No one should be subjected to dramatic or massive changes to their living environments or their properties. But no one should be immune to progress. So that again is a key thing to keep in mind. You're going to have struggles. You're going to have to have hard conversations. And that's okay. Don't dismiss them at this point necessarily. The other big thing that I would stress is there were no big problems to solve. A lot of times that's relatively easy. You come to a group, they hate this or they want this change. Okay, great. We can find a way to get that done. We don't have that. We don't have that generally implied. And we don't really have that in this neighborhood. Some of it is just simply inertia. Again, this is a neighborhood that's been there for, in some cases, longer than the city has existed. And things have just kind of progressed. It's not bad. It's not a massive problem to fix. Generally, people are pretty okay with things. But we also know that there are opportunities here for this neighborhood. It is going to transition as we get to a point of 70, 80, 90 years old in this area. And we have to think about how do we sustain this space? How do we again, hopefully improve the, the space as we move forward as a community? And the big thing with that is the ideas in this plan document, asking that question. What's being presented? Is it a big enough idea to get this part of the community over the next 30, 40, 50 years? So that it is a space that's like Beaverdale or South of Grant or someplace else that is identifiable. It's recognizable. It's a place of pride. It's a place where people want to continue to invest, not just oh, it's the old part of Clive or it's the east side of Clive or whatever it might be. This place needs to have an identity. It has to speak with people. It's being worth investing in. So critically thinking about that, is our vision big enough to achieve that challenge? And right along with that, there are going to be things in this document and recommendations that in order to achieve some of those big things that we're talking about, as you all know, it takes money. And in a lot of cases, it's going to be the city's money pushing the envelope, creating catalysts, moving people to leverage their investments. And, and again, to have those resources is probably going to mean needing to create resources in this district. Right now, you know, even just the basic set of capital improvements for streets and waters and sewers and things that we're talking about doing because they're at their useful life here. Even if you were to add up all of the current property value and look at what the debt service would allow, what the operating fund would allow, what the utility payments are of people. There isn't enough revenue just to cover those replacement expenses. And again, that's not the fault of the neighborhood. It's not the fault of, of the way that this environment is. It just is what it is. It's the way it developed over the last 60 some years. But that does present us with some opportunities where we can generate revenue through productivity of the land. There is a lot of underutilized space in the east side of town. And there are those opportunities to catalyze redevelopment or catalyze and encourage reinvestment on individual parcels in order to achieve revenue that we can use to pay for or to create these greater opportunities for program services for other projects, the things that people want. I continue to stress that we have to make sure that we're cognizant of having the resources to be able to achieve this. So like I said, we're, we're going to get into quite a bit of discussion about the future. It is going to be a little bit scary. That's okay. I would also say that if we're not pushing those envelopes, if we're not willing to kind of test the water on the opportunity for failure, we're not pushing far enough. And in our minds, as we talk about this, And in our minds, as we talk about this, failure really is is only a component if you quit. And secondarily, if we're going to do these things, we're going to find ways to fail as inexpensively as possible and as quickly as possible. But those are part of this process because we are we are suggesting getting into lots and lots of of unique spaces, trying new things to reinvigorate, reinvest some of these these neighborhood spaces in a way that is not templated in another part of our community or available to to kind of go pick from a neighbor and say, boy, they did this great, let's go do that here. We are talking about some things that are going to be needed. And that's what it really does need to be for the city of Clive, that you need to our circumstances, you need to our opportunities. But not every one of them is going to work perfectly. But again, I think the commitment is to continue to make progress, incremental steps. And at the end of the day, I think you'll have a overall product, both in terms of the plan as well as the neighborhood condition. So those are just again, a few of the introductory remarks to the plan itself. Planning and zoning commission and parks board are in the process of reviewing it tonight. They're actually over in your city, city chambers going through the plan. We'll kind of clean up any odds and ends that might come out of that in anticipation of a full presentation to you on May 26. Once we get through that, the primary output of that that we're looking for is again, a prioritization of those plans, policies from the recommendations. We know we can't do all of them at once, we know that we can't do all of them within one year. So it is going to take a steady drumbeat of working on these things over the course of many years to get them done. So we want to make sure that we're prioritizing those appropriately. And then we'll come back to you at the June meeting with a much more detailed and refined implementation plan for each of those prioritized recommendations. That will be a bit of a precursor then to the strategic planning process where you'll start then putting all of the District One or or 86th neighborhood to do's into the overall city. But again, those are a couple of steps down the road tonight, I'd be happy to answer the questions that you might have. But overall, please read the plan, it's available in PDF format or on a specific application platform that would allow you to put comments directly into it if you'd like. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the treatment? So I think I already know the answer to this, and I know you mentioned that Clive is a community, and we do have our unique challenges and, you know, kind of resources. But is there, there's an aspect to this where we want to, you know, like you said, we want to fail, if we are going to fail, we want to fail fast and cheap. So are there things that we can pull from other experiences of other communities have had either in the area or maybe further out? But we can learn from that and avoid those mistakes at least, and maybe build on those?
Yes, and that's something again, I will stress, there's nothing in that plan that hasn't been accomplished somewhere else. And a lot of my colleagues kind of give me a hard time. I have a wall in my room, my office is just full of, of, in this particular case, full of ideas around how to plant water resources with that. There are lots of opportunities for us to do that specifically in the flood buyout area that we're talking about. So we have spent a tremendous amount of time thinking about researching, reviewing, talking with other people that have done projects, whether or not it's a water resource related project or whether or not it's a big thing that you're going to continue to hear from us is about housing. That is a term missing middle. So we know the idea of stacking five, six, seven story buildings up and down the 86th quarter or or within the neighborhood, that's that's not Clive. That's something that would work in Seattle or on the east coast into a larger community. But that context is not right for this neighborhood. But the idea of having some gentle density, whether or not that's duplexes, whether or not that's quads, stacked townhouses, other types of housing products may be very accommodating in this neighborhood space. And again, those are things that are done all over the place. It's just something that maybe we've forgotten about in in Des Moines and in the metro area here. So we aren't going to bring you anything, there's nothing in this plan that hasn't been accomplished someplace else.
Other questions for Doug? I said we never reports and people start on.
Thank you, your honor, I'm happy to report that as of 3:30 this afternoon, we've received 77 emails from unique households in Clive that are interested in the soil quality restoration cost share program. The newsletter showed its worth, again, just driving lots and lots of attention, we've got signs up as well, we've been posting actively on social media platforms and have a story up on cityofclive.com. With this type of initial response, we feel very good about our timelines of getting documents ready for bid, getting a great contractor online and being ready to start doing these SQR implementations starting in September and going through the end of October and first week of November if the weather holds for us. To my knowledge, nobody else in Iowa has tried something quite this ambitious to get 100 done, but I think Clive is the right place to do it. I'm really happy to see households respond so positively about that. If you hear about folks who are interested, you can send them straight to me or you can send it to Julia of Wire as well, who's been working very closely with me and with all of our partners at Polk County, she's done a great job. Next, big action on Clark Street coming up this coming week. You've driven down the corridor, you know, for a number of reasons, there are areas that were not stabilized or at least the stabilization didn't take after we had done that at the very end of construction season last year. We wanted to work quickly to get that area looking more settled so that we weren't getting the erosion into the cells or erosions out into the street. We've our public works team has been pushing very hard with other players in the space like Mid-Am, MediaCom and others who have also been tearing up the area and maybe haven't done the restoration work that they should have done. The city's taking the approach at this point that whether or not we made the mess, we want to give residents confidence that their yards, their front of their house is going to get back in good shape. And so we are quickly moving to go and put sod down throughout all the areas that still need to be stabilized. We're working on what the right approach is going to be for figuring out when plantings for the cells are going to go in and maybe even change up some of that planting strategy. We certainly know that we're going to have to pull some material that's eroded into parts of the cells out. We've got a contractor online ready to do that for us and then smooth out the space so it's ready for sod. So we think that with the the crew that we're lining up, it's going to be most of that work done next week. It may leak over into the following depending on the weather and other projects that they have. But what I wanted everybody here tonight to know was that Public Works, Parks and all of our partners are going to be putting a massive push behind this in the next seven to 10 days so that we can start giving the residents even more confidence about what this ultimately is going to look like. The trees, if you haven't seen them, that have gone in, about 50 plus trees already planted, there will be in another, Richard, I think we said another 20 or 30 about that are going to go in from 105th to the west where we've completed construction. So this is a significant change in the way that that canopy is going to look over over time as those trees mature. And we think it's also going to give us that good traffic calming effect. Residents, we want to hear from them still, the conditions in front of each yard right now are almost like a, it's almost like casework as opposed to a larger project area because there have been so many unique things that have happened in each yard, a tree, a cell, a street light, utility that came in and tore things up. So as we hear from individual residents and households, please send them our way, we want to talk with them, we want to hear their concerns, we want to validate their concerns because they certainly have been patient with us over the last two years worth of construction. But we're getting there, and at the end of the day, it's going to be a beautiful quarter.
Are all the bio potential cells fully constructed? Because I, it seemed like I saw some that looked like they were partially done.
One still needs to be constructed that is east of 104th Street intersection on one of the steep areas, it's a particularly large cell. So that's the only one that still needs to be completely built. The ones that look like they haven't been stabilized and have had some of the erosion, those are areas where the hydro seeding that we did last year or some of the other work we did to try and stabilize has not kept up with some of the early rain that we got. And we still need to go back in those areas now and pull back eroded material and set the grades appropriately so that we can get that sod down. Right now, the focus is on stabilization, I anticipate as we keep refining our plans and then working closely with Jeff and the public works team that we're going to be back in that space in the summertime, not just to make sure we've got good sod that's getting established and the trees are doing well. But just to keep engaging with the neighborhood and figure out, all right, is there additional tailoring we need to do with each of the cells?
And then is the homeowner having to do all the watering for all of that new sod? And are we constructing them?
Sure, so the trees right now, we're going through and watering them to make sure they get established. We don't have the plan right now finalized with our contractor to get for all of the watering. We just know once it's down, especially with the hot weather coming, we've got to stay on top of it or else this is money that's just thrown away. So it will be watered. We're moving very quickly and I don't have all of the plan in place for how we're going to water, but our public works team and our contractor have been talking about that.
So it's not necessarily the homeowner's responsibility to do that on an ongoing basis once the sod, because once that sod gets laid, you got to water it.
Right.
All the time.
Right, Jeff, I'd turn that, turn it over to you for any more guidance on that, but.
Jim, I believe it's a two week watering period that they have.
It's actually for the spec, it's 30 days. When you're depending on the time of year, you're checking to make sure that that's made down and established, so part of the numbers we're trying to get is a a separate watering quote as part of that, so if it needs to be extended, we'd be able to track those costs.
Yeah, because that can get pretty costly for a homeowner. I mean, we're not talking about a whole yard, so that's better, but I know we need construction with with those clients, I mean, they have to stay on top of that for that whole first one or two, otherwise, yeah, they're going to mix up.
The good news is that the area that we need to have access to right along the street, right? So the logistics are a little bit easier than when you've got to move hoses and sprinklers or all around a new piece of construction. But Jim and I want to credit Jim especially and Tony who have been right out there with all of us engaging directly with the residents, answering these types of questions. Because we are trying to move fast, most of our touches, if we haven't been able to touch them, we have a touch of residents already in person, we're talking about phone calls, certainly emails as well. Better though, if we can talk to them person to person because it does have that casework quality to it now.
Other questions for Pete? Pete, you got Susan, see if Susan has anything.
That's woman Judkins, do you have anything to report to that?
I really don't, thank you.
All right, free gun.
Eric. A couple of things here, the CBB board budget committee approved our budget for next year, it's a solid budget that gives me talk last time, increased revenues from hotel rental tax. So one of the key things, increase our market capabilities, which would be very good. Also, a premier health clinic had the ribbon cutting tonight, so always glad to have another well focused business, the city of Clive.
Thanks, Eric. Eric, where's the CBB? Thank you, I wanted to mention that this week is city. Maybe Matthew wasn't aware of that, but we wanted to acknowledge you. It's not quite as big a deal as public works, but we have a week two. We wanted to recognize you during your week, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
And as a second thank you, I want to thank staff and everyone responsible, Matthew and Stigler for getting the beef and everyone here getting this set up here so we can have council and I have ribbon cutting and come straight in here and have a council meeting. For some of us, the outdated reminisce, it's about good old times here in the old council. So thank you all for that. And Richard, do you want to say anything about the activities this evening, it's like proving success, a lot of people here having fun.
Yeah, we're very hopeful at seeing the crowd here tonight and a couple of activities that we've done the last couple of weeks here that we're off to a good start with the programming and you know, I just encourage you, if you see people out and about, tell them about the facility and encourage them to step out and check it out. So we're now open Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 2 to 6, Saturday from 10 to 2, we will have bounce houses one Saturday a month. There's flyers out in the lobby, so share them with everyone you know and encourage them to come out and tell us what they think.
How long are the festivities tonight?
7:30.
Any questions for, if you may get any feedback on the programming or anything like that?
Yeah, we, we've gotten about 30 responses so far, most off the wall one, which would be a candidate mission center, so.
Yes.
But yeah, we're getting big. A lot of good comments and we expect now that people are seeing this, we have QR codes in all the rooms here as we start getting kids in and we're going to ask them just to individually just, hey, what do you like to see or what do you want to do? What hours might work better, so we're excited to see it turn out tonight, I think it's going to be a good summer after.
Anything else, Richard, again, congratulations, thanks for everything tonight.
Only four or five things. One, thanks to Pete, took the call for me today with the resident, did a fantastic job being part of that SQR that sort of followed the restoration side on the Harbach project. Now, if we just get some folks in front of those the project, this was a large one afterwards, some trees, compost, all the work, so we explained all things to them. I give that credit, well done, and the resident sent you a thank you after the conversation. And I'd like to thank us to be an honor to all of us, a commitment to the city.
Thanks for having me. Well, are you done?
Yes, sir.
That's a little great, would you like to say in your own sense?
Absolutely not.
Sam, we'll turn to you.
A few things, your honor, of course, we have a DC trip next week, I pushed up the materials for that, planning out Wednesday, coming back Friday. Again, a lot of the two US beats mentioned in previous meetings, Harbach interchange be one big theme and then the platform property buyout and the whole strategy around universal arts fund mitigation. Will be the other big topic to discuss with our foundation and then networking with a bunch of folks as well. There's definitely some partnerships and stakeholders that'll be on that trip with us that are people to keep informed about those projects and initiatives. So also wanted to, as we get closer to strategic planning, just a reminder there too, is we want to get your Zoom interviews scheduled with Lyle day in July, July 29th or 30th. So if you have a time, an hour block that works for you, be sure to get that to me and we'll get that on your schedules. And then just a reminder too, I'll be on the DC trip with the crew and then I'll be at the office here Friday through Monday, but that, you know, some Tuesday. Other than that, that's all I have, your honor.
Yes, Pete's in DC. Matt's in DC. Should I be the answer to that? You really want an answer to that?
Thankfully, the mayor was sitting here.
On that note, any correspondence we missed?
No, sir.
Any other items for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:48, thank you all.